Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, April 18th City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. It's 6:00 PM, so we'll go ahead and get started this evening. City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Most? Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahy?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Councilmembers have the agenda in front of them. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda, Mayor.
For a second. There's a second from Councilmember Lay. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The agenda is approved. That takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on our agenda or items that only appear on our consent agenda. Are there any members of the public tonight that would care to comment on an item that's not on our agenda? Seeing none, thank you, everyone. That takes us to our consent agenda. Councilmembers have any comments on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, everyone. The consent agenda is approved. That takes us to our council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Any council informational comments this evening? Councilmember Lay.
Yes. Earlier this week, I had an opportunity to talk with the Marshall Task Force of the Colorado Attorney General's Office, and I understand that Mayor Stolzmann had had a conversation with one of the conveners of that group earlier this week. We will probably hear more from them and from the Attorney General generally. We discussed a little about some consumer protection issues, especially relating to insurance. Talked about price gouging, which is something that I think all of us have heard about, and they are very interested in getting more information from anybody who's had experience in price gouging, for example, in apartment rentals or home rentals, if they've had information about prices or rents before the fire and then rents afterward. Go to the Attorney General's website, and on the consumer protection page, there is a little icon, I can picture it right up in the front corner, top corner, right-hand corner, which you can lodge a complaint. And they are very much looking for that kind of information because they know this sort of behavior is going on, but they need very specific information, as you might imagine, in order to be able to pursue those kinds of folks. So, there are those kinds of issues, and I think I mentioned very generally potential air quality issues. I think we're in pretty good shape on that, but I think that's going to be an ongoing issue, and people at the Attorney General's Office do have jurisdiction over that. But we've had a variety of issues come up, and they are very much interested. One kind of good fact about that is one of the people, well, good fact that I wish weren't a fact, is one of the people who's on that Marshall Task Force at the Attorney General is from Louisville and lost his home. So having that perspective right there in the room is a very good thing for them. So, anyway, thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay. And just in other news, the SBA, Small Business Administration, is likely to put out some information this week, so stay tuned for that. Looking for some good news from them this week. Any other council informational comments? Seeing none, that takes us to the city manager's report. City Manager Durbin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two items in your packet, the Q1 2022 Revitalization Commission Report to City Council, along with the Q1 2022 Economic Vitality Strategic Plan Scorecard. Megan Pierce, our Economic Vitality Director, is here if you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
You.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
That went so fast, I wasn't prepared to raise my hand, so, thank you, Councilor Brown. I want to ask a question of Director Pierce. Thank you for the report on your revitalization commission, and I know there's discussion about doing some work sessions in the summer, and I was wondering if you had any preview for us of the type of things they'd be looking at for investments, because I think there's a lot of funds that will be available in the next 10 years that either have to be spent or encumbered. And I was wondering if you could share any information on it at this point, or it could be too early?
Yeah, it's probably a little bit early, but just kind of looking out, we have done financial analysis related to their funding. It was updated last year, kind of in concert with considering the underpass improvement, so we do have a good sense of those funds, and people just, you know, sort of process to either spend those funds or pledge those revenues is kind of the two options once they get to the end of the life of the funding. But the process this year-
Megan, sorry to interrupt you. We can't hear you on the live feed for the TV.
I probably didn't push the button. How's that?
Thank you.
Sorry.
It sounds different.
So, what the process this year is going to be is actually sort of for them to have visioning and brainstorming as the commission with the city council, and then to have an assessment of downtown, and the result of that will be a strategy. And that strategy is going to have near-term objectives that would influence their 2023 budget, and then would also plan for the remaining nine years of the TIF. So, I can't say with specificity. I think we're still on track for most of the projects that are currently in the work plan as high priorities and budgeted for 2022. It's less certainty about the 2023, or, yes, 2023 through 2032.
Yeah, and one thing I have a comment on is the, what is it called? The facade improvement program. I think that's a terrific idea, you know, and I, you know, I know that the corner of Highway 42 and South Boulder Road, Union Jack, there's some things there, but I think about those areas west of there that could probably use that type of idea. I'm not an expert in this, I know you are, but anything we could do to make some of those things, even along McCaslin, especially north McCaslin, where those buildings are behind trees. I don't know what I'm saying right now, other than if we could make some of those businesses more visible, I think that would be good. So, I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And that takes us to our first item of regular business. We'll have a conversation about pay equity audit and compensation market analysis overview. I'll turn it over to our city manager, Jeff Durbin.
Thank you, Mayor. We're looking forward to this presentation tonight. This was work that was started last fall, and this is listed as one of the, this is listed as one of the top priorities for council on your work plan for this year as well. Tonight, we have Lori Graves, who is our compensation consultant with us. Rhonda Hanger is our HR director, and Robin Brookhart is our HR business partner. So, we have a short present, well, it's not short. We have a presentation to walk through with you first, and then we'll have questions and answers towards the end. Thank you. Lori.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. I appreciate it. I'm going to open up a PowerPoint presentation. It's, I would call it short-ish. We're going to go through high level, the pay equity audit results, and also the compensation plan update. I don't know if this is going to share or not. It's not. Will this, I'm assuming we want this? Technology's not my field. Oh, there we go. Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right. So, as we mentioned, we're going to talk first about the pay equity. Pay equity is purely an internal view of employee pay to make sure that everything is, one, in compliance with the Colorado Equal Pay for Equal Work Act, but really just to ensure that people who are in substantially similar positions are earning substantially similar wages. And we'll talk about a little bit more as we get into it what that means. Then we did a compensation market analysis. This is the external view of compensation. How does the compensation that the city has compare to the labor market in the surrounding area, and how do we ensure that you continue to remain competitive and can recruit and retain the talent that you need? And at the end, Rhonda's going to come up and talk about some additional compensation enhancements that have been occurring over the prior several months. We'll talk first about pay equity. As I mentioned, there's really a couple of reasons to do a pay equity analysis, this type of an audit. And the first is just because it's simply the right thing to do, and I know that that's important here within the city. And by doing an audit, it also provides a certain amount of safe harbor protection under the law. So, if you proactively do an audit of pay, if you identify discrepancies that don't appear to be for valid reasons, and you make adjustments, and you have all of that documented, it allows you safe harbor compliance, so that should anybody bring a pay disparity claim against the city for the next couple of years, you would be in safe harbor compliance. That doesn't mean that you wouldn't necessarily be found to need to adjust pay, but you wouldn't have to pay any liquidated damages, which is generally where the larger dollars are. So, it's, there's a couple of reasons to do this work. This law went into effect, I'm sure as you're aware, beginning of last year, beginning of 2021. And the language that you see here in the second bullet point is directly from the Act. Women in Colorado overall earn on average 86 cents on the dollar for what's earned by men, and then you see women of color, it drops dramatically down from there. So, again, this is an internal view of pay. This is not a law that has anything to do with numbers, with hiring. It doesn't matter how many people of any gender or ethnicity that you hire, they just want to know that once you have people in, that the pay is equitable, right? So, that's what we're looking at. And we do that by organizing the positions throughout the city based on their EEO four category. That may not be something that everybody's intimately familiar with, but it's a, it is standards that are already put out through the Department of Labor that categorize positions together, so like officials and administrators, your director-level team, professionals, paraprofessionals, protective service workers. So, we're not just comparing every job across the board to every other, because we know pay varies dramatically based on market. The final results of this are still pending, but we'll show you what we have really preliminarily, and we don't anticipate there being really any concerns or major adjustments. What you see here on this slide is detailed out by category. So, you see in that column that says count, that is the number of employees who are in positions that fall into each of those categories, so officials, professionals, paraprofessionals, and you see it go on down. When you see that where it says red, light red, light green and green, when we do our statistical analysis, we take each grouping of employee, we determine what the average wage is, and then we run a standard deviation, and we look at the dispersment of pay in that category, and we identify anyone who is one standard deviation below the average, and anyone who is two standard deviations below the average. So, red means two standard deviations below the average in that category. Light red means one, and then the same thing on the positive side. Light green means one standard deviation above, green means two. So, you can see the dispersment, and as I look through these numbers, I know it just looks like a wall of numbers, but this is really the dispersment that we would expect to see. We would expect to see from a percent of population, somewhere around 10% that are going to fall in that red or light red, mostly in the light red, and then usually maybe 15 or 20% that are going to fall in the green. All of that, just because we identify a pay disparity does not mean that it is an unlawful pay disparity. It rarely is. It simply means there's a lot of reasons why pay varies, and the Act itself outlines what are considered valid and invalid reasons. So, only thing that's really left on this analysis is of those 35 or so employees that are either in the red or light red, first glance, you can see that 25 of them are people that have been here three years or less, which is usually a good indication of why they would be lower in the pay range. There's about 10 that need a little bit more analysis, but again, we don't anticipate anything, any major findings coming out of this. So, now we're going to move on to the market analysis. This tends to be the more-
I just want to pause for just one moment, just because the last slide was complex and make sure there aren't any questions from any members.
Absolutely.
And Councilmember Dickinson, I can see you too, so, if you have questions too, you're definitely engaged.
Thank you.
Mayor Portem Maloney? He's just said thank you.
Of course I have questions.
Of course.
So, when I look at this pay equity analysis, and I just look at the totals, to me, it shows it's more heavily light green and green than it is in red. So, that would say that we're probably compensating more than the market by some small percent. So, we're leaning more towards more than less. That's as deep as I want to go with that question.
Potentially. This, in this analysis, we really didn't look at market at all. We simply compared all of the positions in one category, determined what the average pay was for that category, and how people relate to that. Generally, why you see more on the green than in the red is if you have longer tenured people, who tend to be further up in their pay range, and so they tend to pop out on the green side.
Thank you for that. And I, one more question. Thank you, Mayor. Could you explain the titles you have up there and the categories? Like, who's an official, who's a professional, and so forth?
Right. So, those are categories that are laid out through the EEOC, and that is the same way that those positions are reported when you file that EEO one report. Officials, they call it officials and administrators. Those are generally your department heads, your director-level employees, who, kind of your highest-level strategic employee. Professionals is a huge group below that, generally degreed professionals with heavy amounts of subject matter expertise in what they're doing, and a fair amount of independent judgment, right, in their job. Paraprofessional sits below that. Skilled craft and technicians tend to be people that are working more with their hands in outdoor jobs and in physically, jobs that require a lot of physical protective service workers, as police and fire. Administrative support is somewhat self-explanatory. Service maintenance is another one that is more hands-on, but it is usually more entry-level, slightly lower skilled than what you see in skilled craft and technicians. So, these are the way the information is organized when you report on it, and it's sometimes challenging to know exactly what category a position fits in, because it's, there's enough ambiguity in it that there's many times multiple categories a job could fit in. We've done a lot of this work with municipalities, and we've kind of got it down to where we feel like we have them in a fair comparison to each other.
So, that spurred one more question, Mayor. So, if I look at the officials category, you have a count of 11, but you only have three in the categories listed over to the right. So, that would mean the other eight fit into the middle of the bell curve for salaries.
That's exactly right.
All right.
When you see that bell curve there, within one standard deviation above or below.
Right. Thank you very much, Ms. Graves.
Thank you, Councilmember Most.
Yes, I just wanted to request that this complete slide be somehow amended to the packet or something, because the one in the packet is not, I couldn't even understand it because it didn't have the headings, and it wasn't really clear, so, just, you know, kind of a housekeeping thing. I just think it would be great if we could make sure that somehow gets in there.
We can add it as an addendum. Thank you, Councilmember Most. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have two questions. One is, when you're doing these calculations, are you figuring in just the salary, or are you including benefits?
It's just base pay, because the benefits tend to be equivalent across, so we're looking at base pay as the comparison.
Okay. And then, second is, part-time employees included in this as well?
They are. You'll see that last category where it says PT rec. We included all of your part-time recreation employees in that category, because they had a similar makeup to what fits in service maintenance, right? So, that's really what made that category so large, is the wide variety. So, if they are part-time year-round, we include them. We generally don't include part-time seasonals, and we also don't include positions that report directly to the Board or to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you very much. The question that I have is kind of inherent in your data and your analysis, which is that you assume, is it inherent in the law that you should assume a standard deviation or a normal distribution of your data?
Well, the law is relatively new, and the law does not lay out a detailed process for what an analysis looks like. They have very broad guidelines.
Okay.
And I would imagine that over the coming years, there's going to be a lot of adjustments and a lot of additional guidance that comes out. There's been a little bit of additional guidance that comes out, but there hasn't. So, what we did when we developed this methodology is we worked with an employment attorney in Denver that handles primarily pay disparity claims, to ensure that the methodology we were using was really going to be true to the process.
Okay, that's interesting. I find it, from a statistical perspective, the way, you know, the assignment of salaries is not a random process, right?
Right.
And so, the assumption that it's somehow a bell curve, I find funny, but I'm glad that you've been consulting with consultants, and that this is the best thinking and the best practice at this point. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, if you want to continue on.
All right. So, now we'll talk about the market analysis. Again, this is the external view. So, obviously, this project, as I mentioned, is, we started it in the fall. It's been a long, ongoing project, and the goal here is to ensure, obviously, that the city can continue to recruit and retain, and paying competitive to market is a big element of that. And in our current labor market, it's obviously a bit of a moving target, so it's definitely a timely project to be doing. We want to make sure that all the positions are competitive to market. We also want to make sure that internal equity is factored into this, right, because one of the things the pay equity law says is that market alone is not a valid reason for paying one job that is substantially similar to another, different than another. So, a lot of us that have used market as our primary practice are having to encompass equity into this now as well, so we use that lens as well. And we also want to make sure that anywhere we can, we can provide career progression, so progressive levels of jobs and positioning positions on the pay structure so that employees can actually see a career as they move through and work with the city, rather than just, you know, a job. Our goal is to provide the recommendations for how the current pay structure should be revised or redesigned, how the position should be placed on that, based on the defined market. We did a facilitated discussion with the leadership team to determine what are all the organizations that should be included in your defined labor market, and then we obviously will include implementation recommendations and ongoing maintenance, so that when we're finished, you have everything you need to not just be current now, but to maintain that structure in the future. Our deliverables, there were several of them, and this is just kind of a brief outline. Obviously, we came in at the beginning and made sure that we understood everything related to current state. We looked at org charts. We looked at job descriptions. We had one-on-one meetings with every department head to ensure that we understood every single job that reported up to them. So, there was a lot of time put in on that, because if we don't fully understand what that job looks like here, and what the requirements are here, we can't pick the correct benchmark and know that we're getting the right market data. Titles can be misleading, so we have to really dig in. We did this facilitated discussion with the leadership team to talk about, what is your labor market? Who are the other organizations, municipal or otherwise, that should be included to determine what market looks like? And you'll see, we came up with a fairly broad definition of market, which we encouraged. We want to have as much data as possible to ensure that we can really get statistically valid data for each job. There was existing wage survey data, so we went through and collected all of the information from the existing wage surveys. We used both Employers Council and Colorado Municipal League as our primary data sources. From that, after we created a market average for every position, we recommended a redesign of the pay structure. We recommended placement for each of those positions on the structure. We did an ongoing analysis of that to make sure that we understood what implementation would look like, what the costs would look like, where there, did that create any particular compression or internal equity concerns? We did add to this, all of what I've talked about so far has been base pay. On top of that, we also did a high-level benefit plan analysis and compared, really, three primary elements of your benefit plan, which we'll talk about, to the market data that we had, so that we could recommend changes there if they needed to be. And then, obviously, it wraps up with a comprehensive final report. This is the list, this is the, I call it definition of market. It really just means the list of municipal and public sector organizations that data is gathered from in order to determine an average wage for these positions. And what you'll see, this essentially makes up, Employers Council breaks their data into regions. They have the Denver Boulder region, and they have Northern Colorado, and what you see here is really a combination of those two. So, you'll see cities and towns, some that are larger, some that are smaller, some that are more complex, some that look very much like you, some that have services that are different. So, we know that all of these organizations won't match every single job that you have, but it's one of the reasons to have a larger list, right, to make sure that you can really get statistically valid data. We added counties, we added special districts. We did also add private sector data, so for the positions that you have that also exist in the private sector, Employers Council gathers that data from this same region, and for those jobs, we included that as well.
If we could just pause here for a moment, I'm sure there'll only be questions or discussion. Mayor Portem Maloney?
So, when I look at this list, I'm trying to cross-reference it with the pay equity analysis results list that you had. So, the categories of officials, professionals, all the way down through administrative support, how do you, I'm looking at the cities like Denver and Aurora and Lakewood. How do we compare those cities, especially when you're talking about officials and some of the professionals?
Right. Sure.
So, I mean, I understand when you're talking about a librarian, comparing a librarian, they should be, that should be clear that that's very similar, but when you're talking about a city of Denver or a city of Aurora, you know, some of these, you know, upper management officials have a very large scope.
Right.
So, how do you deal with that?
So, we generally take the information, and we pull in all of the actual information from the surveys, so the actual wages that are being paid to those incumbents, and then we scrub it and adjust it based on what we know about that position here within the city. So, generally, what that means, and this kind of goes to your point, is you're more entry-to-mid-level, right? If you have a wastewater treatment plant operator, they are essentially doing the same job here as they're doing if they worked at Metro Water Recovery, they just might have more of them. So, those are usually a one-to-one match. When you get up into the director-level jobs, for the very largest jurisdictions, we tend to scope-cut those to account for the smaller span and scope and the smaller downline that exists in those jobs. So, we pull all of the actual data, we go back to our notes about all of the positions, and we make adjustments to really make sure that it's fitting the span and scope of the job that you have here.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this one?
Thank you. Okay. So, a little bit more of our process and methodology. Now, we know the organizations that we want to compare, so we go to the surveys, and what we're pulling out of those surveys, again, are the actual wages being paid to incumbents in those organizations doing similar work to here. So, we're not just looking at their pay ranges and comparing their ranges to yours, because we know that every client I work with, their employees sit somewhere different in the range. Some have everybody in the bottom half, some have everybody in the top half, so ranges can be misleading. So, we pull those actual ranges. We talk about, I talk about scrubbing them to ensure valid data. You know, occasionally, what we'll see is a number from a, that somebody submitted to a survey that we just know does not make sense. So, we look at every result, scrub out what doesn't make sense, make the adjustments we talked about. If something needs to be increased or backed off based on a difference from the market data to the job here, we do that, so that we can get a really good market average. And we match as many of the city's positions as we can to this market data, but what we know is we can't match 100% of them. Every organization has a certain number of unique positions that there's simply not going to be good market data for. When we run across a position like that, we will place it on your structure based on its internal relative value to other positions that we know we have good benchmark data for, right? Sometimes this happens in jobs where you have multiple levels, right? You might have four levels of a job, and there's two in the data, so we adjust them to make sure that the four makes sense, right? Your current pay structure, this is just an overview of how the pay structures are currently set up. You have three pay structures that exist, one for all full-time positions. They're all in one pay family on one structure. The ranges are what I would consider fairly narrow. They're 32% wide, which just means from the minimum of every range to the maximum is 32% difference. And they all sit 4% apart from each other, so there is significant amount of overlap in all the pay ranges, because they're very close together, right? That makes a total of 42 pay grades on that pay structure. This was, this is current. You have a part-time pay structure with seven pay grades. It's varied. They're different widths and different distances apart. I'm sure it's just been adjusted over time, right, to fit as those jobs change. And then, you have jobs that are your police sworn non-exempt jobs that are on a separate step plan, and we are also keeping those on a separate step plan and just adjusting those steps a little bit. So, you have three structures right now. What we're recommending is increasing that to five pay structures, and really, the only difference is that all of those full-time jobs that were all lumped together into one structure and what we call pay family before, we're suggesting you break out into three, one for management positions, one for what we call technical and professional, and one for what we call labor trades. We're then also keeping the police on a step plan, which we separate, and a part-time structure. And the reason we're recommending that breakout of the full-time jobs is because we know that different types of jobs move differently in the market year over year. Jobs, they're not all the same, and we've obviously seen that lately. You've seen it with law enforcement. You've seen it with CDL truck drivers, right? There's jobs that are going to move a lot faster. And by separating them, it gives you the ability in the future, each year, when you determine how much that pay structure needs to shift to keep pace with market, you can do that independently. So you don't have to move certain jobs more than necessary to make sure that you're picking up other jobs that need to be. Many years, you might adjust them the same percentage, but it gives you that opportunity. We also structured the labor trades a little bit different with midpoints that are a little closer together, because that's a pay family where you tend to have a lot of progressive levels of jobs. And if you've got four levels of a job and all the pay grades are 10% apart, it can be challenging to not push that top job too high on the range or keep the bottom one too low to fit them in, right? So the structures need to be a little bit different. So that's really one of the primary reasons we're recommending differences like this. And this is just an overview of what those structures look like. So, the management has 12 pay grades. They range from 35 to 40% wide. So in general, compensation kind of best practices is that your lower wages, your lower grades tend to be narrower. And then as you get higher up into more professional positions, higher levels of responsibility, they tend to be wider, right? Width in a range matters because when you get into the math just a little bit, I'll try not to get too nerdy, but when you increase the width of a range, it lowers the minimum, but it also raises the maximum. So you've got to really watch both of those, because you need to make sure the minimum of your range is competitive and that you could actually hire people at that level, and that your maximum is attainable, right? And so, we tend to pay very close attention to that to make sure that you've got the progression that you need for people to move through jobs, but not to make it where the whole bottom part of your range really has no utility, right? So you'll see that in management. Is there a question? I'm sorry.
I wasn't meaning to cut you off, but as soon as you're done with that thought, I'll call on Maxine.
Now's good.
Councilmember Most.
Okay, so what are the cost and overhead implications of going to this complex of a pay structure?
Well, we've got cost implications coming up in a few more slides, so you'll see what that would be.
Yeah, I always used to do that.
Of course.
You know, somebody's talking about something.
A good lead-in.
Sorry, I don't know whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but.
You're taking us there, it's good. So we'll talk about the cost. And from a complexity standpoint, really, once it's set up the first time within your system, it really shouldn't add complexity. Because you're really just adjusting one number and it adjusts that pay structure. It's just a matter of identifying in your, in your system which pay family a job applies to, which we were just talking about.
So there's upfront, there's an upfront.
There's a little bit of upfront work involved, and I'm, and I think, and I know that Robyn's already been deeply involved in making sure she knows how to get that lined up. So, again, you can just see the structure of the rest of these positions. Technical and professional looks very much like management. It simply starts a little bit narrower, because the earlier pay grades are a little bit lower, so we made them a little narrower. It gets larger. Labor trades, similar, but what you can see is that they are 8% apart versus 10. Again, that allows for us to fit all of those progressive positions in there. Part-time rec, they tend to be very narrow, because those are positions that people are generally not staying in for an entire career. And you've really got to make sure that your hiring rate is competitive, because that's kind of what you live or die by for those positions. So we make those very narrow. And then the police step plan is not dissimilar to what you have right now. There's slightly different numbers of steps, but it's still a step plan grounded similar to what you have right now. We did adjust according to market, the entry rates for those steps and the max rates for those steps, because obviously, that is a rapidly moving market, and so we've got that brought current. So here's the financial piece. We were only a slide ahead. High-level impact of implementing this. So, one thing I want to point out is that some of the positions that exist within the city have changed relative position on the listing. Meaning, they might not, they might be higher or lower than the positions they might have previously been grouped with. Because we were doing this based on current market data, and certain jobs move quicker than others. So they're not always going to line up exactly the way they always have. That's part of keeping it current. We did, like I talk about, we also looked at internal equity. So we first placed positions on the structure based on what we see in market, but then we look at it from an internal equity lens to make sure, is there, are there a couple that might need to be moved? Are there some? That we want to make sure we have them placed in a way that they encourage progression and they encourage the way people tend to move through jobs in the city. We want to make sure your pay structure supports that. And once we did all of that analysis and we looked at all of your current employees and what they're currently earning, the good news is, there were only 17 incumbents, only 17 employees throughout the city who have a current rate that is below the minimum of the new proposed range they're in. That's definitely one of the smallest impacts I've seen in quite a while, which means the city's been doing a really good job of keeping this current. So what you see at the bottom are annualized base pay-only numbers, so not the full benefit-loaded number, of what it would take to take the incumbents that are currently below range minimum and move them up. So you see it broken out on full-time at just under $81,000. Part-time is a little bit of an estimate, because some of those are people that work varying hours, and it is difficult to calculate an annualized impact, but we kind of did a rough estimate on that. And the police sworn is actually what I would call a full implementation, which means taking every officer into this step that their tenure and experience means that they should be on. So it's fully implementing and not creating compression, making sure that you have everybody where they should be on the scale.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay.
Yes, this is really helpful, by the way, and I know how much work goes into this. So, trying to keep my day job to the back of me as much as I can as an employment lawyer, it's hard. When you refer to internal equity, can you describe what you mean by that?
Sure, I can. So, every organization has certain positions that are critically important to them, or, you know, positions that maybe function as a department head in that city, that don't function as a department head other places. So occasionally, there are positions that you might grade a little bit higher than what market says, because you want to make sure that internally, they line up with who you see as their peer group, right? And so, that's what we're generally making adjustments for. We also look at the results of the pay equity and say, okay, are there a couple of positions that repeatedly showed up as low in their category? Those are probably positions that just need to be moved up a grade, so that over time, those rates come up and they're not in that red zone anymore. So those are both things that we look at.
Okay, and the second question I had is, really, on that third, it's kind of the other side of that third bullet. There are 17 incumbents below range minimum, but likely a few more incumbents with pay lower in the new range and experience and performance would indicate. Do you know how many are above range minimum? Or range?
Maximum.
Maximum, excuse me.
You know, we have that calculated, but I don't have the number in front of me. There were, I'm going to say very few, but that would be my off-the-cuff answer. There is a handful, but I don't have that number calculated. And, and it is not our recommendation that anybody's pay come back, obviously. Those are what we would call red circle rates.
That was not where I was leading.
Yeah, no, understood.
I was just interested in whether it's weighted one way or another, whether it's about the same.
We, we do work with some clients that will have, I have one that has 45% of their employees at or above range maximum. They haven't adjusted their structures in a long time, but they've kept pay current, right? And I have others that are on the opposite end of that spectrum. And it feels like you guys have a, have been moving your pay structures and it's been staying current, so you haven't been holding people back by hitting range maximums a lot.
One final question, and I should have asked it earlier. Who's the employment lawyer you were working with?
Who's the?
The employment lawyer.
Chuck Pasalia. He's great.
He is great.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
And that's a question I would not have asked.
But that was his final question.
Yeah. Ms. Graves, I want to reiterate what Councilor Lay said. Thank you, we appreciate this discussion and being able to have it this early. And, you know, this is, pay equity is important to council. And I've been on council, this is my seventh year, and we've talked about this a few different times. So, we want to keep talking about this and making sure that pay equity is something that's, that's upheld. I'm trying to correlate this slide with one of the earlier slides. When you talked about in Colorado and so forth, the gender equity pay and so forth. And I'm looking at the third bullet there, talking about the 17 incumbents that are below the minimum range. Is that a concern here in Lewisville?
Yeah. It's, it's really not, because as, as much as they feel like they're linked, they're really not at all. So the pay equity really doesn't care how you compare to market at all. You are only looking internally at your, at the distribution of pay for employees here. So.
So what I'm asking about is, what you pointed out in one of those earlier slides was gender pay and equity. Do we have that in the third bullet here, is what I'm asking?
Oh, are those incumbents predominantly female? Is that what you're asking? That they're below range minimum?
Or Latino, or black, or whatever.
You know, I would have to go back in and look. I don't believe that is the case, but I would have to go back in and look specifically.
That's something I'd like to know, because, you know, that's something that we'd want to rectify immediately. The second question I have is, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, like, you know, my colleague, Councilor Most, although I've read ahead. So the, in the fourth bullet, you're talking about the police sworn number, does that include benefits as well? Or, I think it's two more slides, you're going to talk about benefits. So it's 147-plus.
Correct.
If we decide make the benefits equitable more closely to other municipalities.
Correct.
All right, so the number's actually higher than 280, and that's why you said minimum?
Yes, and that is, that is base pay impact only, annualized, yep.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Fahy?
I think Mayor Protem just kind of asked my question.
Okay.
But, related to it, in addition to the police compensation for benefits, what about part-time employees that, that are close to being benefited but are not getting benefits? Do we have a large percentage of people who are very close to getting benefits but not? For example, there are some, like nursing positions, if you work 28 hours a week, you get benefits. Do we have positions like that?
So that analysis was a little outside of our scope, so I don't know that I could answer that, but Rhonda, Robyn, one of you might have more information on that.
We have a handful of folks that work, our kind of right cusp is 29 hours, and that's for the Affordable Care Act and protections around that. They cannot work more than that. And if they work more than that, then we, it's fully budgeted position, otherwise it falls into our variable salaries, falls into those positions.
Okay, so for example, the coordinator of the meal site program at the rec center is part-time, but I don't know how many hours? So, so if they work 29 hours, they get benefits, but they're not allowed to work 29 hours? Is that right?
No, if they work 30 hours, they're benefited.
Okay.
If it's under 30, then it's 29 or less, and they're required to work 29 or less, and it's unbenefited.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Most?
Well, I just want to go back and clarify a little bit the question I asked earlier. I wasn't specifically asking necessarily about the cost of the actual benefits. Or the cost of the salary changes, but, but the administration, and I, I guess I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around how we can move from sort of a single class to, you know, a pretty robust, granulated system which is going to impact HR across the board in terms of evaluating people and, you know, on a regular basis. And I understand there's upfront work to get people into this system, but then it would seem to me there's also ongoing work when you're operating out of a system like that. And so I guess I'd like to understand, you know, I think this is really great work. I think it's obviously something that we have to do as a community, because otherwise, we're not going to have the best and brightest, and certainly, that's what we want in Lewisville. But I'd like to just understand what that impact looks like to, to HR staff, to management staff, to IT, right? If there's, and maybe it's very trivial, maybe it's not, but I guess I'd kind of like to understand that, because it seems like it's a, it's a much more complicated system than what we've been using today. And having worked in the corporate world for a long time, and hearing people tell me, oh yeah, we're going to put this great system in, it's going to save everybody lots of time and money. And then, yeah, and then there's the other piece of that. And so I just really think it's important as an organization, you know, that as an effective organization, that we, you know, understand that and that everybody's prepared for that. And that we build that into, you know, how we're going to manage this going forward.
City Manager Durbin, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, definitely. I think that's a, that's a really good question. And one of the things that I've seen since I've been here is, there's a lot of things that have been very labor-intensive with our payroll system. So working through this process, we've been looking to ensure that we treat all of our employees consistently, as well as have a structure that is easy to administer. A lot of what's happened with having all the employees essentially in this one class is trying to remain competitive and put people at the right levels. So there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes, if you will, grappling with that issue with HR. And I, I think that this is actually going to be easier for them to administer, and they're nodding their heads, but you guys can maybe.
Rhonda?
Yeah, we were just having that conversation. And first off, I have to say, I really do appreciate that perspective. Having spent most of my career in HR before I started my business, those are usually the things people don't ask about. This system, as he mentioned, really, in many ways simplifies it. One of the key problems with the current system is because the ranges are so close together, they're 4% apart. What that means is that every year, the team has to analyze, if market has shifted more than 4% for any single job in the organization, it has to get upgraded to the next pay range. So there is huge amounts of movement every year. 10% gives you a more realistic buffer. A job doesn't need to move to a whole different grade until it's 10% different in the market. So I, I do think there will be some initial setup with the pay families, but the rest should be better. Would you agree with that?
And maybe just one more thought on that, if I could. When it comes to local government and our essential services, there's some areas that we're really having trouble with, not just Lewisville, across the board, with recruitment and retention. We were just at a city manager conference last week, and I heard from probably every city that I talked to, recruitment and retention, major challenges. And especially in law enforcement and some of our public works operations. And so by separating these out, it, this idea of being able to move one group that's being more competitive in the market separately will be a huge, huge asset for us moving forward. Being a competitive employer is a key today.
Thank you, City Manager Durbin. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate this presentation. You know, I know, I'm a little bit familiar with the state governments' classifications, there's a lot of them, and it's very complex. How does this compare with what other municipalities or counties are doing?
This is what I would consider best practice. So we work with probably 35 different municipal governments, cities, towns, and counties throughout Colorado, and this is what I would consider standard best practice. My, the organizations that I have that have maybe 150 employees or less, we tend to keep on one pay structure. When they really get closer to 200-plus, there's usually enough complexity and different and enough numbers of jobs that it then makes sense to split them out. So I would, all of the things we've talked about are absolutely, in my view, best practices.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think this is great. It's been an awesome presentation. You know, I am excited to see maybe the final report. But I don't quite see here, I think, Councilmember Maloney alluded to, is just, you know, understanding how, how much of an effect this is going to have on our, you know, if we had a gender gap and what that gender gap was and what those solutions are here, and a gap with, with diversity and other things. And so what I see is, you know, the final result of, okay, it's going to cost, you know, $80,000 here, $50,000 there, $140,000 there, but I'm not seeing like, oh, and good news, we're fixing some, some things that we found that were problematic, other than just, yeah, kind of looking at this bell curve concept and getting people within standard deviation and all that. And the other thing, I was just, I guess I'm a little ignorant of it, would like to understand, you know, I used to be a school teacher and there was no such thing as merit pay, right? Like, you started at this amount, and after two years, you made this amount, and after five years, you made this amount, and there was just, anyone in the world knew exactly There was just, anyone in the world knew exactly what you made. Does this give us more or less or the same ability to pay people based on performance within their ranges? Is that, do we have nobility or some, so?
That's a great question. And yes, this actually should enhance your ability to do that. For one, the ranges, most of the ranges are wider than what you have currently. So, that's going to make it easier for you to have that ability to move people through without getting them to the top. And the other piece that it's important to know is that there's really two things every year that should contribute to an employee's pay increase. One is the pay structure itself needs to be increased to keep pace with market, which means an employee would need to get, if, if you shift the entire pay structure by, say, 2%, you would need to give every employee at least 2% to keep them at the same place in their pay range that they were currently. So, that's one piece. The second piece is what you're referring to, which is a merit adjustment generally based on performance. That's the pay increase that actually moves you through your pay range so that you get closer to the max. So, really, there's both of those factors that should play in. And we can talk about administratively, timing, know how that should happen. But it should absolutely enhance and improve the city's ability to keep pace, keep your structure aligned with market, and keep your employees moving based on merit.
And I guess the other piece there, so I'm hearing, yeah, cost of living increases that are applied to the entire entity. And then merit raises within grouping. And then, of course, promotions to new positions can get you into a whole new area. And then, within that, oh, man, I lost my question. Well, I guess I just understand all three things. We'll just stop there. I lost my question. If I, if I, if I can get it, I'll come back.
Okay. Let's go a bit further in the slides, and then we'll take some more discussion.
Awesome. All right, let me get this going again. Okay. So, we're going to move into the benefits review piece of this. We talked about, we did what I would consider a high-level benefits review. That means we didn't go through and dig into the health plan and compare your deductible to other people's deductibles and your out-of-pocket to other people's out-of-pocket. It's virtually impossible to do that based on the way the data is published. What we looked at were really what we consider the three primary factors of a benefit package, which is what is the cost of the health insurance to your employees? What is the amount of contribution that the city makes towards retirement? And what is the total amount of paid time off? So, those are really the three big categories that we looked at. This data is captured through Employers Council. And so, what we compared you to were municipal employers in Colorado. We unfortunately don't have the ability to go in and pull exactly those same cities and towns that we did for comp because they lump it all together. But we pulled the government line, municipal for Colorado, when we were comparing those items. So, now we have a really busy kind of wall-of-words-looking slide, but this is the overview on the benefit recommendations. So, the headline on the health plans is that you are definitely competitive. We are not recommending any changes. I think the single greatest thing you have going for you here is that you offer two options. You offer a high deductible option, which allows you to offer completely free-of-charge health insurance, not just for single coverage, but all the way for family coverage. We don't see that very much anymore. I have several clients who would love to get back to that, but it's very challenging to get back there once you've left it. And that's got to be a huge recruitment and retention factor. So, all of that was aligned, and we're not recommending changes. Paid time off, there's really only what I would call an administrative change that we would make. You have a combined PTO bank. Some other organizations have that. Some have separate for vacation and sick. But when you look at all of the elements of paid time off, holidays, vacation, sick, all of that, all of your levels are competitive across all of that. The only thing that we're recommending is potentially, in the future, pulling holidays out of your PTO bank, mostly just because, one, it's administratively more difficult to have holidays included in there, and it can be a little bit more costly because you're lumping them into something that needs to get paid out that wouldn't necessarily need to get paid out. So, we see that as an opportunity in the future. It's not a competitiveness issue. It's really more of an efficiency issue. Where we did identify opportunities is on the retirement contribution side. So, currently, the city makes a 5.5% contribution to retirement for all employees, for what I call general government, which is everybody except police, and also for police. When you look at the data, this is also an area where the data is a little bit challenging because there are a multitude of different types of retirement plans, qualified retirement plans. And some organizations are in social security and some are out. But on aggregate, when you look at the data in this area, it's about 6%, little over 6% when you average it out, that most municipal employers are contributing towards what I call general government employees, meaning non-protective service. Currently, at 5.5%, you're a little bit below that. I'm recommending going slightly above that to 6.5% because, again, I think these are the, these are the things that draw employees to government. They're the things that draw employees to municipalities. And in our current labor market, where the private sector is a little bit of the wild, wild west when it comes to pay, they can offer whatever they can afford. It's a little bit more challenging for municipalities to be that flexible. So, these kinds of opportunities, having a little bit of competitive advantage on the retirement side, I think is important. Now, with police, again, Employers Council doesn't do a good job of separating out public safety within their data. We know that public safety always has a higher contribution to retirement plan. I say always, 95% of the time. We, our organization sponsored a custom survey about eight months ago, and it included 29 different agencies in the Denver Boulder area. And among many of the questions we asked, one of them was the percent of contribution to the retirement. And the average coming out of that survey was right at 10%. It was 10.1%. So, when I look at where you're sitting at 5.5%, it's significantly low, right? And so, that's what you see, the recommendation. And the cost that you see on these screens for that is the cost that the HR team, I think, worked with finance to create what that would be to increase the contributions.
Thank you. Any questions from folks? Councilmember Most?
Is that, is that, are those matching numbers or are those just?
Well, it depends on the plan.
Okay.
You want to talk about the plan type?
We have not worked out all the details on, if this gets approved, how we would do that with either the 401A or the 457. And we have some options on that. We were kicking around some ideas about what that might look like. But the dollar amounts you see up here is a contribution from just the city into the police program and the general government program.
Some of them, I think, are structured as matches in the municipalities, but I think it is more common for it not to be structured based on a match. You see the match more on the 401K in the private sector, and you usually see it a little more automatic in the public.
Yeah, I'm still new to all this municipal government, so excuse my, my corporate bias. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Most. I have a question, just backing up to the separating holiday from the PTO bank. Are we making that decision tonight, or is this an informational discussion? Thanks.
Informational at this point.
If, if this comes back to council for a decision, I just want some more information on, you know, how that would happen and not be seen as a takeaway and like what the strategy, I mean, it just seems like, I don't know. There's complication in that particular bullet point, and I'm not sure we need to do that. And so, if it's a positive employee feature, I, I just would like to have more information before we decide to do that.
We, we won't be recommending this change at this point in time. It is a popular employee feature, and so, we'll continue to look at it in the future, and we'll see where it goes.
If there's something from the software side, like Councilmember Most was saying, that needs to be addressed, that's one thing. But I think taking the feature away is a separate conversation. Thanks.
So, really, that kind of brings us to the conclusion on our part. The next steps from our perspective is to ensure that we're building a communication plan for employees to be able to share, you know, the detailed work at the level that is appropriate with all employees, to share the results of the market study, to make sure that employees know that the city takes this seriously, that you spend a not insignificant amount of time and resources ensuring that you remain competitive and making those changes and doing that on a regular basis. Then we'll wrap up with a final written report so that you have all the documentation on the process, the findings, the recommendations. And then, we obviously will stay available and engaged because it is, as you move through the implementation over the course of the next several months, that's generally when questions come up or things might need to be tweaked. And obviously, we remain available for that.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We'll turn it over to members of the public this evening if there are any...
We've got, we do have, I'm sorry, one, Rhonda's got, I think, just a quick slide that she needs to cover at the end.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
No problem. Here you go.
And Rhonda, could you just please pronounce your last name? I've, I was going to call you Director, and I didn't want to say your last name incorrectly.
Hanger.
Hanger. Director Hanger, please.
Yep. Thank you. And my piece will be short and sweet. I have just one slide. I wanted to talk to you guys about the enhancements that we've provided our employees already to date and just list them off for you so that you guys know what we've been doing with our employees. We did the vaccine, vaccination incentive early, well, shortly after, well, I don't even know when that was, actually. But we, we were offering our employees a dollar amount if they were going to tell us if they were vaccinated or not. We did some market adjustments across eligible positions, and we do those annually. We talked about it because we had just the 4% ranges. And so, we did those adjustments. But we also made some immediate adjustments on some of those positions that moved in the market that we weren't current with. And so, we did some adjustments there as well. We do have and have had some hiring sign-on bonuses for specific positions. And that's helped us with recruiting and being more competitive in the job markets. We've had, we will, in, as a result of Lori's study, we will have some pay equity adjustments. As you saw on there, we have one in the red and a few in the light red. And we'll look at those and make some adjustments there as well. We did the, we did the Marshall Fire Employee Appreciation Program and provided some of those first responders and folks who worked tirelessly through that, the early stages, with a, a small bonus. We also had the PLB, which is, what we've talked about tonight is the PTO or the PLB Sellback Program, which was a nice benefit for those individuals who were maxed out at the top of their PLB and were not accruing any more of that. So, we've, we've taken, we've, we've bought back some of that, some of those hours, and they are now accruing time in their PLB accounts. And then, we're proposing two additional paid holidays, one of them coming right up, Juneteenth. And, and then the other one would be President's Day. So, we're, we're proposing that at this point. So, I just wanted to give you guys an update on, on some of those things we're, we're doing with our employees as well. And then, that concludes our program.
Thank you, City Manager Durbin.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Just a couple other items, excuse me. In addition to what we're talking about with the overall program, just wanted to let you know that there's four positions that we're working on. These would be permanent positions. One would be an Equity Officer, as recommended by the EDI Task Force last year. That I would be proposing to house in the City Manager Office. We have not started recruitment yet on that, pending this discussion. A Risk Management Coordinator position. Risk Management currently is housed in several different locations in the organization. Risk Management, Liability Reduction, managing claims is a very important process. And this position, this type of position can ultimately pay for itself by reducing those claims and costs. So, I'd like to recommend that position. And then, two, specific to Recovery, a Building Inspector position and a Building Plan Review position. The Risk Management, we have not moved forward at all yet. I wanted to talk to you first about it. The Building Inspector and Plan Review position, we're advertising those currently, but we haven't started interviews because we want to have this discussion first. Those two are obviously important. We've talked about Recovery and moving the process along quickly through our Building Department. What we're hoping to do, when council's comfortable, providing support for all or portions of this program before we proceed, that would be our first step. And then, this would require some form of a budget amendment, depending on what you're comfortable supporting. So, that would be a, a last formal process to implement all of this. And with that, I just, Lori's been great to work with. HR's been working so hard on this. And this really is important, not only to me personally, but to the organization and the community. Though we're a competitive employer because our people are what make this community special in terms of all the work we do every day. So, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Durbin. And with that, we'll turn it over to members of the public to comment on this agenda topic this evening. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment? Seeing now, we'll turn it over to council discussion on this topic tonight. Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, a couple of things. I want to echo thanks for all of the people who've had their hand in this. This is a huge lift, and this is a new law which those of us who have to work in the middle of this are struggling with, just like many of the employers out there. So, I appreciate all that, and it is absolutely critical. I think the one thing, and I don't, this isn't controversial, I don't think, but I think what we saw on December 30th and thereafter was the depth and breadth and strength of our staff. And it is incredibly important that we kind of keep doing what we're supposed to be doing when it comes to that. And it is a very hard thing to strike all of the balances that we're required to strike under the law and everywhere, and organizationally. But I have confidence in the City Manager and others that that is being done. I'm delighted to hear about the Equity Position, and I certainly support that. I support the Risk Management position too. I think that really is a good, a good position to consolidate some of the functions that have been kind of farmed out in different places. And I think will easily pay for itself, easily. I don't even think there's even a question about that, as long as the person's doing a decent job. So, I, all of those things are, are good. I, I don't have anything specific about the, the two other positions, except what I know from everybody who I've talked to, who's been asking about, how are we going to deal with the deluge of requests for building permits and all of the inspections that are going to happen and so forth? And I got grilled, and Councilmember Fahey got grilled, both of us got grilled before homeowners group, wanting to know why things weren't posted, where, where's the positions? You know, we want to see people being added. We want to see this moving forward because we can already see obolics in the system coming up. So, I, I think, I trust that that's going to be in the, in the offing. The one thing that, that wasn't discussed, I, I wanted to take something that Councilmember Dickinson said and take it one step further in the pay piece. We, we've had two experiences in the last two years in which we have used very intentionally bonuses in the system to reward great work. And I, I know that there are some dangers inherent in doing that. And I also know that it may not be as typical in the private sector to do that. It's very typical in the pub, or excuse me, in the public sector to do that. It's very typical in the private sector to be doing that. And I don't know, this is probably not the time to talk about that right now. And I'm not sure it really weighs in very specifically into pay equity just yet. But I think I, I would like, and I'd be very interested at some point in exploring this with my colleagues on council, the idea of setting something aside more, more regularly for use by the City Manager and HR and however it was designed to try to recognize great employment or great work. Because we have had people, and, you know, I certainly would call out our Police Chief, who I think did receive a little bit of a, a bonus, could never have received enough, from my standpoint, for all the great work that he did, having to not go home to his house every single night and continuing not to go home to a house every single night, at least not the one you had for all those years. And I think it's great to, to think about that at some point. It's something we've, we've kind of thrown around a little bit, but we've had these experiences recently, and we got to build on them. Thanks.
Mayor Protam Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Lay, for your comments. You know, to me, this is a very, very important topic. But we have to look at this, I think, holistically. And pay equity, and the question I asked about the gender pay equity, you know, I'm happy to hear we don't, we're not facing a serious issue of that here in Lewisville. But it's something we need to always keep in mind, and we need to ensure we do appropriately. And I really appreciate the, the discussion of the, the compensation enhancements, especially the ones we've done the last year, two years. As Councilor Lay mentioned, you know, the, the work that the staff has done over the last two years with COVID and with the Marshall Fire is unprecedented times in the hours and the effort and sleepless nights and everything else that they've endured. You know, what little compensation we've given them for that, they definitely deserved. And they deserve, you know, our thanks. So, I, you know, I think that's very important. You know, it's interesting, when I, when I read the staff report, it talks about $280,000 financial impact. But if we throw in the, the, the benefits piece and the positions that you just mentioned, City Manager, we're looking at well over $1 million. And, and I'm wondering how we're going to do that. And, and so, you know... And so, you know, absolutely, we'll take it a budget amendment. And then what I'm more concerned about is what happens in 2023 and 2024 and so forth. So, you know, I think this, this was titled as an overview tonight. I think it was an excellent overview. I appreciate all the work that's been done. I'm going to want to see more data around all of this. You know, the last time we went through, I don't know if we called it Pay Equity, Mayor, or whatever we called it the last time, when we adjusted pay and it was appropriate, I don't think we had all the information when we made the decision at the level we made. And, and so there were some unintended consequences in my perspective. So I'm going to want to see more data before we, we, you know, step ahead. I see us stepping ahead, but I want to make, as a counselor, I want to make a policy decision that I fully understand. And I don't think I asked the right questions last time, so I'm going to be really careful this time in moving ahead, even though I believe it's absolutely the right thing to do. The thing I didn't know from the last time we did this was the fact that the Police Department, we were only providing, you know, retirement benefits, if you will, or however you want to state that, at half of the level of other municipalities. That's, that's something I never knew until, you know, I read the staff report. You know, as far as the new positions, I, I think it's interesting because I think I share your view, City Manager Durbin, on thinking about things in a more collective way, where you have resident experts on various topics. You mentioned the Equity Officer. Risk Management is an example. I think of Project Management, which has been spread across the organization. What I hear you saying is rethinking the organization. And so as we consider those positions, I'm going to want to hear more about your thoughts about re, rethinking the organization in a way so it can be more efficient and effective. And, you know, I, I agree with, I agree with those things. The one thing that Councilor Lay mentioned was talking about the Building Inspector and Planner. And, you know, maybe at some point in time, the Director of Planning can talk about this, but I don't think two positions is going to be enough for the next three years. So I know you're probably looking at a lot more, and we're going to need to understand those impacts as well. So I'm looking forward, as this being an overview and continues discussion, I'm looking at your vision of rethinking the organization in a way where it can be more effective. And I, I think it's all very positive. I appreciate the work that's been done. So, you know, with that, I'm ready to have another discussion in the future and, and do what's right for the city of Lewisville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. And just for folks tuning in, just so that people walk away with full information, on the consent agenda tonight, we did approve a contract for on-call building code consulting services. And there have been some other consulting contracts that we've approved as well. So there are other things happening in addition in the background, just so everybody's aware of what council took action on earlier. Number of folks in the queue, so I, I see all of your hands, and we'll get to you. Councilmember Dickinson is up.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think to the positions that City Manager Durbin, that you're bringing up, I think those are really important. I'm really excited about them, especially the Equity Officer position. It sounds like you're saying it'll be in your, in the CMO, which I think is incredibly important. I'll, I'll be curious to see what, what you guys are thinking about, you know, for pay and for resources and support for that person. I know that one human can't come in and do all of that work on their own. So I'll be excited to see, you know, what, what the plan is for their, for their success. But it, my opinion, can't come fast enough. So I'm certainly hopeful that we can, Mayor, I don't know what, what we need to do to move that ball forward on those positions, because all, all four of those seem incredibly important for the community right now. And I certainly don't want to be, you know, waiting for a few months for us to say, yeah, go ahead. But I also hear Proton Maloney's request for more information, which is always, always a good thing. So yeah, I, I'm, I'm in full support of all those positions, and especially that Equity Officer position. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. First of all, I just want to say that I fully support the city manager's desire to hire a, an Equity Officer. I think that's a great idea. I know that was a recommendation by the EDI Task Force. And I know that many of the members will be, of, of that task force will be excited to see that move forward. I'm also very much in support of the other, the Risk Officer and the other positions that were mentioned, moving forward with that. And I think that the consultant's recommendation about moving to the, a more, I don't know, appropriately complex structure of, of compensation, it makes a lot of sense. One of the things that I think I'm disappointed with in this analysis is that the, the analysis and the staff report led off with the reason for this particular study and the reason for the bill was really around, you know, pay equity from a gender and race-forward lens. And in the analysis that you brought to us, I did not see any information that referenced how we are paying people of different races, ethnicities, genders, or some analysis that would give me an indication that our policies are appropriate. I'm not saying that they aren't, but I do think that if that is the reason for our analysis, or at least part of the reason for the analysis, that we ought to have that kind of race and gender-forward approach. So in data that comes forward, again, I would like to see that kind of, some information about that so that we can, that I, as a council member, can feel good that we, as a city, are doing our best to make sure that race, gender, age, whatever, you know, disability status, any number of, of what, you know, folks' identities are not an impact on the, on the compensation that they're receiving.
Thank you. Councilmember Most?
I want to second everything that Councilmember Brown just said. And again, I, I think that perhaps your, the comment you ended with about not seeing that kind of analysis in this report is exactly why we need an EDI Officer in Lewisville. Because we need that perspective brought into everything that we're doing and to make sure that we're not, even with the best of intentions and really trying to hit the mark, you know, I'm looking around the room, and yeah, we've got a, a nice percentage of gender diversity here, but we really don't have much more than that. And so I think it's very hard to, to really do that well without some targeted expertise to keep us going in the right direction. So, thank you.
You, Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll add to everyone's comments about the need for the EDI Officer in particular, but also for the other positions. All of the positions that are being proposed are very important for different reasons. And I'm actually particularly interested in, in increasing the Police Department's retirement and getting it up to the neighboring community's standards. To think that they're getting half what our surrounding communities are getting is really distressing for me. And so that, that's one thing that I would really like to see changed. But everything else, I agree with what's been said, and you did a wonderful job, and thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to approving whatever we can when we get a little bit more information.
So I'll do my best to try to summarize what I think I heard council say. There was some mixed feedback in what we all just talked about, and so I'll maybe not exactly perfectly summarize it, but put, put out a proposal on how to move forward and then see if the group kind of nods that, yeah, that makes sense on how to move forward. So there were sort of three big buckets of information that we were talking about this evening. The first is about bringing every employee into the minimum of their range, which, as I understand it, is the state law on how we're defining equity under the law. And so it seemed like I didn't hear any disagreement about taking that action and moving forward with the budget amendment to accomplish that. So I'm not seeing negativity around that. But so when we see the budget amendment, we would expect to see that in that and have more data and information around that when we see the budget amendment. And then the second chunk is around police benefits. So we would like to have another follow-up conversation once the HR team has had time to determine what path you would want to bring forward to us on benefits for the Police Department, and we would have a council conversation around how we can improve there. I don't see Rhonda nodding, but okay, now she is. Thank you, Director Hanger. And the last one was on the positions. So there were some mixed feedback there. People are generally very supportive of the positions, but we want to understand how we'll be able to pay for those on an ongoing basis. So when we see the budget amendment, if they could, if we could have information in there around those positions, and then our recurring expenditures and our recurring revenues to show how we'll cover them for the long term. And so we'll make that decision officially at that decision, at that meeting on, based on the information that we have. Does that sound okay to folks?
Councilmember Dickinson, I just didn't see you nodding or not nodding. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Sorry, it's harder with the two different versions, so thank you. Are there any areas where you need direction that, that I didn't try to summarize it, City Manager Durbin?
Yeah, I heard loud and clear, more data, more numbers, fiscal impact. But I'd like to suggest one more ad, one more bucket, where we look at the overall recommendations from Lori and the HR team for revising the pay and grade structure and what those overall costs would be, so you can understand those in more detail. Because that is one of the recommendations that we're bringing forward.
So I think there was, I actually didn't summarize that because I thought there was so much consensus. So is there consensus from the group to move to the structure that has more tiers? So I think there's already consensus on that point.
Okay. Pending more numbers to confirm.
I think there's no question about whether we want to move to that system. Then the question would be, do you move people into their appropriate ranges? I think there was no question as to whether or not to implement the system.
Okay.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
So in my comments, I was asking, have enough data to understand what we're approving. The previous time we approved something that did not have the granularity of data that I think we need to understand. So.
Okay.
So that's, I support the idea, as long as we have the data, and then we can make a policy decision on what we're agreeing to.
That's what I was hearing earlier, is, is support for the overall concept, but package it with the numbers and what kind of a budget amendment you'd be looking at to accomplish that.
Yes.
Excellent.
Great.
Any other conversation? Any other direction needed, City Manager Durbin?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much for the information and presentation. That takes us to our next agenda topic this evening, which is Resolution Number 15, Series 2022, a resolution approving a services agreement with Flock Group, Inc. for license plate detection software and hardware. And this has been continued from the 15th of March, 2022. We'll have a staff presentation from our police chief, Dave Hayes. Hi, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council. It's been a long time since many of us have seen each other. I don't live 20 feet from, from Caleb and even, don't even see him very often. So it's good, good, just good to see everybody. In regards to the agreement that you have before you tonight, we don't have a, a formal presentation. I'm certainly here to answer any questions that you may have. Technology offered by Flock in this case really serves as a force, a multiplier for us to help ensure community safety specific to the Marshall Fire. And we heard you from the last time we were in front of council, some specific questions, privacy concerns, practical concerns. I think we've addressed all of those, but please let us know if we have not. And, and including, I've had it mentioned before, privacy concerns. We are as concerned about that as you are. We think we've taken some great steps to secure data. We are, for instance, one of the things I made, I thought it was in there, but I wanted to make sure it was in there tonight, as I was reading before the council meeting, that for instance, we don't share any data with, having to do with immigration. That's both in the council agenda item, and it's also in our department policy. There's also been some concerns about some what-if kind of situations, an incident that occurred in a metro area law enforcement agency. I don't believe that that would occur here for a whole bunch of reasons. That's not how we train our officers. I think that was a tragic mistake that's probably has, probably more to do with some culture from that agency than maybe even the training. And I, I just don't think that, that would happen here. That's a, it's a pretty, pretty elementary mistake that I think is, with some additional work that could have been, been done really fast and really immediate, that probably would not have occurred that way. In addition to that, some of the things that occurred in that incident would, would be absolutely prohibited by our policy. So, but with that said, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Chief Hayes. Any questions from council members to start? Any members of the public care to comment? We'll take it back for council questions and comments. Any council members have questions or comments?
Hey, Chief Hayes, I have a question. Could you just tell us about the locations, generally speaking, that you plan to deploy them in around the city?
Sure. Mostly around the Marshall Fire, Mayor, but also some ingress and egress. And the reason for that would be is that if we do have an incident that takes place that we, let's say, construction has started and we have a major construction theft, maybe the license plate reader in that particular block didn't capture a plate, maybe we just got the, the back of a vehicle and weren't able to read the license plate. We're hoping with the ingress and egress that we might be able to match the two up and maybe get a clearer plate or get a, actually get the license plate. So the idea is to really, it's really about the Marshall Fire, but in order to do that, we wanted to expand it a little bit to include the ingress and egress.
Thank you, Chief. And just following up on that, I just, I have a question. Do we have the ability, I mean, it does talk in here about modifying the agreement or negotiating revisions to the agreement. Do we have the ability to reduce the number of days that the data is stored?
We do. I think the, the recommendation, as you see in the agenda or in the council communication, is 30 days. I, I think that's a, you know, it's, it's more than a few days, and 30 may not be the right number. The idea is that we want to make sure that we've got some time to act on the information. Sometimes things are not reported right away. It might be a, a long holiday weekend. Detectives may be busy. And so we're certainly open to any, any direction from the council. If, if council would like something less than 30, I, I wouldn't, I don't think I would recommend to you that we go much less than 30, but that's, certainly we'll accept any guidance that you have.
Thank you. Any other council members have questions or comments? Councilmember Most?
Um, we, when we had discussed this last time, I had mentioned the idea of putting signage up. Is this, is that something that we're going to do, or are we going to do this sort of more surreptitious, surreptitiously?
I think anything that we can prevent is, is good. Of course, we don't know what we prevented, and the fact that we have signs, or we could put up signs, I think that, that helps as well. I, I think that's.
I think signs are great, because there are a lot of people who will see the sign and say, there's surveillance going on in this area, and go, that's enough of a reason for me not to do it. I, I'm, I very strongly favor the signs because in my 20 years in the biometrics and digital identity industry, the places where I have seen this gone very, very wrong is when people don't know what's going on. And surve, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to surveillance. I think surveillance is, is, is a great tool. I just think it's really important. I mean, my recommendation would be that we put signage up in the Marshall Fire areas where this is going to be used and say, this, we are using surveillance in this area. And sometimes that's enough for people to just move on and go somewhere else. And so, yeah, I, and I think it's important for the community for two reasons. One, they know what's going on, and one, they know that we're being extremely transparent about doing that. So that's something that I would like to see, and I don't know if that needs to be, we need an amendment or how that works from a technical standpoint, Mayor Stulzmann, if you can help me with that. But that's something that I'd certainly like to see included in this.
I think we can just give direction to the City Manager in addition to the resolution. So that's, that works just fine. City Manager Durbin?
Yeah, I would agree with that, and it's a great point, Council, Councilmember Most. We have actually talked about that signage, that very same signage. We put it on hold pending your action on this item.
Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I was looking ahead to the, well, two things. One, I agree with most of what, well, all of what Councilmember Most just said. I think anything we can do to deter, generally, people going in and messing with or invading those sites is a good thing. So that's a good thing. And I, and I do believe that people will appreciate, people in Lewisville, the homeowners, both the homeowners who've lost residences and renters who lost their residences, and everybody else in Lewisville will appreciate that. And so I'm, I'm all for that. I noticed on the, in the, in the red. for that. I noticed on the, in the, in the resolution on this, Section 2 talks about that. The mayor being further authorized to negotiate and approve revisions to the agreement as necessary desirable. And I just wondered about that. I've talked with, briefly with the mayor about that before. I'd be glad to assist on that if we come up, and if we need anything, and I guess Councilmember Most might, might be willing to do that too, but I wanted to see if there'd be any interest in that. I, I do share some concern that there may be some, some changes that are going to be necessary as we get into this. And I think from the standpoint of our last discussion, the concern is that the community, you know, it's going to be, there's enough people in the, in the community who are going to be concerned. I think it's, it may be worth having a couple of people on, on tap if we need to think about amending within reason.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fahey, and then Mayor Protim Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I agree with what's been said already, that any kind of signage is going to help with our transparency about what we're doing, and it's also going to probably prevent people from even entering the area with any kind of ill intention. I mean, I see the sign in the basement of the library that says, you are under surveillance camera, if you're under the library. I, I think that's just informative. And so-
Glad that stopped you too, for taking those books there.
It has. Yes.
Appreciate that.
I, I think actually it's, it's prevented some of the children from skateboarding into my car, but that's another issue. But yes, I do appreciate the whole idea. I think some of the, the issues that people have are with, kind of, they're feeling that they're going to have their privacy invaded. I think we should emphasize that we're only keeping the camera video for 30 days, and let them know that this isn't something that we're sharing with anyone else. This is just for us, if something happens.
And also, we're not, there's no facial recognition, there's no facial characteristics. The idea is, is the license plates and what we may get from a suspect vehicle.
Right.
In, in addition to whatever the timeframe may be, as council directs.
Great. So I think it's going to be a wonderful procedure.
Mayor Protim Maloney, and then Councilmember Most.
I, I first had a question for Councilor Lay. So in the resolution in Section 2, are you suggesting a change, or are you just suggesting that the mayor consider procedurally asking other, other us to help when things come up?
The latter.
Thank you. Chief, thank you for bringing this back to us and answering a long list of questions we had from the last time. When you first brought this idea up to us, it was really a reaction to what was going on with the Marshall File, Fire, and the concern about security in those areas. And I would ask you to focus on those areas first. As we already know, there are people who are taking advantage of the fact that there are homes still in those areas, or, or whatever it is. And I know you deal with that every day. And, you know, and that was the original reason, so I hope that is the first priority in implementing this. So, but thank you very much.
Councilmember Most?
Along those comments that you just made, Chief, and this is for the city manager too, I would hope that part of this will be having some kind of informational page on the city website, just to clarify these points. Yeah, okay, just wanted to, I was sure that that was under consideration, but I just wanted to make sure.
Any other comments from folks? Any proposed motions? City Attorney Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding Section 2 on the resolution, I just want to make sure that the council is clear as to the intent of Section 2. It's revisions to the agreement that are made prior to execution, so not amendment of the agreement going forward. And, you know, we can tighten up that language in the future, but that, that is just the standard language that we include in your resolutions that approve agreements, is that, you know, it's really intended more for typos, and, you know, minor changes that don't affect the substance of the agreement, but it is all prior to execution.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. Mayor Protim Maloney?
Okay, you brought that up, so I have a question. So, so this is a two-year agreement. So if we intend to extend this beyond the second year, will it require another resolution? Yes. So at that time, if we want to have, have it be different, then we would change the resolution at that point in time?
That's right. We would just negotiate changes to the agreement.
All right. I won't be here, so it's okay.
Okay.
And it's a 30, it's a 30-day out, right?
Yes.
Right. My understanding is there's a 30-day trial period, and then after that, it's a two-year agreement. And of course, as required by Tabor, it is subject to annual appropriation.
Any other questions or motions from council members?
I can move that we approve Resolution Number 15, Series 2022.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, everyone. Any discussion of the motion?
I'll just add my comments briefly. This has been one of the very hardest agenda items we've had for me in a very long time. I talked to many residents about this. I talked to people inside and outside of our city about this, and I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling quite a lot. I, you know, the discussions, when you talk to people about public surveillance, it's like, well, everyone has a phone, right? We all have a phone. But you're choosing to have your phone, and opting into it. And, you know, then there are things like red light cameras. In, in that case, the public surveillance is capturing an actual illegal activity, like it's not just capturing and running every single person's information against a database. And, and so there are just some big philosophical questions. And I really do applaud the police for trying to work out ways to address public safety. And I talked to other cities. I talked to Bomar, who has had this in place, and they do feel that it's reduced crime. I just struggle with this from an equity perspective, and whether this makes people feel included and welcome in the community. If you have questionable immigration status, would you feel like you could come, you know, just complicated immigration status, would you feel welcome if you knew that there was mass surveillance and didn't know how it was being used? I also don't inherently trust the corporation we're working with, which is really not fair. But that raises a lot of concerns for me, that like, there's this data that we're collecting, and then how will that ultimately be used? And maybe I just don't understand the technology well enough to understand that, you know, they can't use it, but I don't trust that they can't, and that they won't use it. And so for what purpose will they use it? When you think about, like, the fire that was, there was a fire in one of the local metro areas, places, and people in Ken Carle set the fire, and it was like in Aurora or something like that, that they did it. And it was like, well, how did they find that out? And it was like, based on Google searches for very particular addresses that were found by the police through warrants, and they followed the due process to get that information from Google. But like, they were able to look up what everyone was Googling, and find out who did it, and ultimately find the people who killed a family, so that, I mean, I guess maybe in the end, justice was served. But it just, there's quite a lot of surveillance happening, and, and what people perceive as private information being shared for profit and for other purposes. And not all of it is good, and some of it is nefarious. And so, anyway, sorry for the sort of rambling discussion, but there are just a number of issues with the surveillance that I'm really troubled by. And I understand that this is happening all over the place, and that Lewisville not doing it doesn't end the practice. But I just can't in good conscience vote for this. It just, it does not seem like what we would do as a small town, like this doesn't seem like how we would combat crime. This seems like a very big government, big brother approach to addressing an issue. And I would rather put this $60,000 toward education, or to helping people with the social determinants of health that would help offset crime. I would just rather use this money in a different way. So I'll be voting no this evening, but I completely understand the struggle, and I understand why you might be voting yes. Thanks. Any other discussion of the motion?
Councilmember Dickinson?
Appreciate those comments, Mayor. You know, I, I certainly hope that, you know, if, if this passes, and we have this technology, that, you know, yeah, we, we aren't, you know, chasing down plates that are maybe expired, or chasing down people who have previous criminal records, or that that isn't sort of the idea here, that, you know, if, if a vehicle is stolen, I think that's a good one to look into. And, and really what I, what I've envisioned is, you know, I, I don't know what the percentage is, and Chief Hayes could certainly speak to it, that, you know, the majority of our crimes aren't stopped in the act, right? It's very difficult to, you know, catch someone while they're doing it. We have a lot of ability to, you know, for instance, my car is broken into in front of my house, and eventually they found the person who did it, and returned the things, and that person was caught, but they weren't caught in the act, right? There was some good investigation, investigative work to catch them. And I would hope that this would really help with that, that when, you know, we, when we know it was a, you know, a blue Toyota, and we can track back to find that car and find its license plate as it entered the town, or entered the neighborhood, or, or what have you, that that can be really useful in going back and solving something. But I, I agree with you that, so I don't know what, because I, one of us to vote no along with you, Mayor, because I agree very much with what you said. I think I would maybe prefer to get more assurances in the way this is being used, because, yeah, I don't want it to be felt as some, some banner in, as you come into Lewisville, that, you know, this isn't a welcoming place, or, or as you said, that, you know, that you should be, you should feel like there's a police car driving behind you at every moment when you're in Lewisville, staring at your plate. One thing I do appreciate about it is it is sort of colorblind, that we're not looking at the driver, looking at, you know, the state of the vehicle, and saying, gee, I don't, I don't like the, the cut of the jib of that driver, or the way that vehicle looks. It's kind of a beat-up car. I'm going to pull him over. It's just a license plate. So that, that part, maybe I have a little bit more faith in, that it's used correctly. But if you want to speak to, it sounds like other people want to talk, but I'll, I'll listen to the other comments before I make my final decision.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Lay?
I, I guess I, I'm uncomfortable with some of the comments about this, partly because I don't think we should be up here negotiating policing, in the sense of every, essentially, kind of, I mean, we've got a contract for this technology, and that's one thing. I'm not sure the issue of disqualifying our police department from using the information in the way that it needs to, or should. I mean, if, I guess, certainly if the primary focus of this is to deter and investigate property crimes involving sites that have been damaged by fire, is, that's what we're talking about. But I, I sure would hate, I don't, it, it just seems like a separate discussion to suggest that in the course of approving or not approving the contract, we're going to set forth policing policy. I just, I'm uncomfortable with that. I, I do appreciate the, the privacy concerns. I mean, I, I think we, we need to take those into consideration, but there's, you know, if, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out all of the unforeseen circumstances that could come up in, in using this data, and are we going to put a condition on this, that, that information cannot be used in any way for this, that, and the other crime, or potential crime? Because that, that strikes me as kind of a, I mean, I don't even know all of the implications of that, but I don't particularly like tying the hands of the police when it comes to, to, to what might be done there. I also think that there's dangers, but I, you know, this is, we already have a technology which I think is limited in what it's focusing on, and also limited in how long it can be used. I think that's what the chief said before about how long it's being used is really important. I think probably the, the prosecutors, the DA's office has some, would have some concerns about that too, because prosecuting takes a little bit of time. You don't want it to be, you don't want that evidence to disappear as you're potentially prosecuting somebody, and it takes time to do that. But I'm, I'm just a little bit troubled about how we do that, and whether we do that in conjunction with approving or not approving the contract.
Mayor Protim Maloney, and then Councilmember Most.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, thank you for your comments. I, I have a lot of the same concerns. I also weigh, you know, what's in this resolution, or at least the staff report on the issue of the initial reason for this was to protect those areas of the Marshall Fire burn areas. And so we've already seen issues there. And, and so, you know, when I weigh this, you know, I, I rarely come down 100% on anything, and this is one of those things where I'm 60, 40 in the position of saying yes. So I will be voting yes, but I think your concerns are real, and I think your concerns are something we need to pay attention to. And so I would suggest, as we go through these two years, we collect enough data, and then we understand this from a policy perspective, we understand some of these concerns that you articulated, Mayor, so that when council looks at renewing this in the third year, they have more data. Today, it's some level of speculation about how it'll be used, or what the impacts are. It's unfortunately what somebody used to call unknowns, and I think you've heard me talk about unknowns. It is unknown, and, and I think your concerns are real, but I also believe that we have a commitment to this city to be, to protect, you know, people and property. And I believe this is one of the things that will help contribute to that, and will augment the wonderful police department we have now. And so I'm going to vote yes, but I do have a split vote in my head, but it leans towards yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Most?
So I just want to tap into my experience again here. There are lots of examples of this kind of technology being used really badly. And there are lots of examples of this technology being used well. And, and the critical difference is the policy, is the container, is the, the, not just the initial restrictions that you put in place, but, but as a, as a body, in this case, our municipality, having a very specific purpose in mind, being very clear about what, what data we're capturing, what we are and are not going to do with it. And I completely understand your concerns, and Mayor Stolzmann, and, you know, I, I share them as well. I mean, I, this is, I've lived in this space for 20-plus years, and I just think that the technology exists. If you asked me, oh, should we put this everywhere in Lewisville and collect license plates for all the people that drive everywhere in town? I said, absolutely not. To me, this is very, it's narrowly defined, it's purpose-driven, and so I feel very comfortable with that, again, as, and especially with, with, with clear signage that we're doing this, so we're not tricking anybody or fooling anybody, and with clear explanations on public, publicly available websites, or whether we, you know, put out a press release, or print paper, or whatever, so that people understand this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, this is the issue associated with. So I think, to me, the, the transparency and the limited scope, from my perspective professionally, is what, is the difference between a well-implemented program that has value, and a poorly implemented program that opens lots of cans of worms. So I'm going to support this, because I think as, as, you know, what I'm hearing from the, from our chief of police, and from our city manager, is that we understand the, the, we have a clear scope of what we're trying to accomplish, and we have clear limitations on what we're collecting and how we're going to use it.
Thanks, Councilmember Most. Both Councilmember Lay and Councilmember Most-
Both Councilmember Lay and Councilmember Most made really good comments, but it makes me think that I have a very different perception of what we're doing than what both of you have described. And so, Chief, I just wonder if you could clarify for me. So will there, will these cameras that are collecting data only be, will the data only be accessed if there is criminal activity in a fire area, or will the data be run against a hot list for every car that comes past one of them? And then other, all of the crimes, like, if there's a wanted person or a car theft or anything, will all of them be followed up on?
Not necessarily followed up on. The cameras are running all the time, or motion-activated cameras. So if they were to get a hit, like, on a stolen vehicle or associated with a kidnapping, we would be aware of that, if not right away, certainly the next day, and we would follow up on, hey, your stolen car was here, or the kidnapped vehicle is here, or otherwise. But absent that hit or some connection, some wanted vehicle, we wouldn't be routinely following up on anything. We have enough to do. So, again, if there was a hit through the night or during the day, or we had a construction theft and we wanted to go back and take a look at and see who was in the area, maybe the construction crew left at 5:00 on a Friday, and by Saturday morning at 9:00, all of their stuff was gone, we would look at that timeframe, but nobody's got the time or the inclination, I think, just to look at cameras, and we're certainly not monitoring them 24/7.
Thanks, Chief. Councilmember Dickinson. And then I think, just so everybody knows, I'll try to get through everybody one more time. We have a motion on the floor. Thanks, Chief. Councilmember Dickinson, and then Brown.
I just have a question for our Equity Officer.
Excellent. City Manager Durbin.
We don't have one, so. But I am, I am really curious to know what impact this policy of having these cameras might have on your real or perceived equity issues within our community. But I, I really, if you haven't answered, Jeff, that's fine, but I really am sort of tongue-in-cheek back to a previous issue and how important that is.
I can put it on the list for their first day at this point. Otherwise, I'd be guessing. I don't think that's fair.
Thanks.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. I appreciate your comments and the presentation. I share and shared, I think, many of the mayor's concerns. I was glad that we, you all put this on for a regular agenda item. I'm, I, you know, I do not support broad surveillance of our community, and I, and so, you know, the idea of having cameras that are constantly running, that are checking is, you know, something that we need to take very seriously. And I take this very seriously. I think I agree with Councilmember Most and her thoughts on this, which is that we have, I think, through this process, pulling off the consent agenda, asking detailed questions, understanding what the limitations, what the uses are, and I think the assurances of the chief, I feel confident that we have a narrow scope that's appropriately defined and that we control the information. I think your presentation just now, Chief, was helpful in understanding exactly the kind of information that you all would be, I guess you'd say, the exact kind of analysis that you all would be doing on plates that kind of come in perpetually. So I'm willing to support this, but I also want to keep a very close eye on it, and I hope that in the future, in, you know, as you implement this program, that you will come back to us and help us to understand more about how you're utilizing the data and the kinds of, you know, action, police actions that are taken based on information that is gathered through the program.
Councilmember Lay.
I think we all share the concerns about mass surveillance. I don't think anybody has been talking about surveilling the entire town 24/7 since we started this discussion, and I don't think that's what's at issue. That would be incredibly expensive and, I think, would be largely not usable, because we wouldn't be using it. So I don't think that's really the issue. I think we have to be prepared, though. If we say that we, I mean, and just for the sake of argument, don't pass this and don't use this technology, we have to be prepared to find some other way to protect the property. And I don't know very many other ways of protecting the property, except maybe putting up signs and hoping for the best, or having people available to actually be there watching. And those, it strikes me that that, that the last option, I mean, maybe there's other options I'm not thinking about, but, I mean, you could, I suppose, alarm the properties themselves somehow, and I'm not sure that would work very well. But we have a commitment to, at the bottom, to protect the property of the people of the city, especially people who've lost their homes. And so I'm flummoxed a little bit about the alternative, because we can criticize this, and we have, and I think it's been a good discussion. I, too, am glad we pulled this off, because I think we did need to have this discussion, and I think we'll be better for it. But I, I think it's important to realize what we're not doing and to realize what we are trying to do and what the alternative is, because we really can't simply do nothing, I don't think. If that is the suggestion, I guess I'd like to know that, because if that's the, that would be a good thing to have on the table. I think one of the, do we know, you know, our, our city is in control. You are in control of who or where you put, with some assist by the company, where you put the cameras, are you not?
Yes.
So that's the main thing that gives me some assurance that it's not a mass surveillance, because I think everybody on the council is suggesting that's not what we want. And certainly focusing those cameras on the areas where people have lost property is critical. My only concern, I think that I was making the point of earlier, is that if information pops up, you said as a hit, maybe that's because of something we learned the night before, some kind of crime that we believe happened, and it shows up in the surveillance video, that certainly, I think that's the kind of thing that all of us would love to get if, in fact, that happens. If it happens to hit on, for some other reason, it sounds like that is a possibility, too, right? That might have nothing to do specifically with a crime that we believe was committed the night before. Might be something that's not connected.
That's correct, Councilman Lay. It could be a stolen vehicle, could be an associated vehicle, a kidnapping, something like that, and what that would tell us is, is that that license plate was in your neighborhood, and requiring some additional follow-up. And then otherwise, it would be, now we've had a theft that was reported, maybe the next morning, let's see what happened overnight and see if we can, see if, because it's motion-activated, do we have somebody at that location of the theft? Can we see the vehicle? Can we see the license number of the vehicle? That kind of thing.
So, I mean, in some respect, there's sort of a primary purpose of what we're doing, and then there's an ancillary effect that could happen, which I think is that somebody who's not a suspect in a crime on the area, in the burn area, might be tagged for some reason, right? And if that happens, I guess, my view of that is I would not want to say that we can't, that you can't use that information. I think we limit the scope, but I don't think we say, well, we're going to say only that, I mean, we're going to limit the kinds of crimes that you can use, you can only use hits for X, Y, and Z purposes. If we're going to do that, we better list out exactly what kinds of crimes are appropriate to be using that information for, and all the crimes or potential crimes or investigatory purposes that cannot be used. And I, I guess I'm uncomfortable with doing that if that's what we need to do, but that's just, I, I don't think there's any need for that. I think we're already limiting it enough. So I, from that perspective, I think we're, that's what I understand the use of this to be, and I'm comfortable with that kind of limitation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. That takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. That takes us to council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. I have one future agenda item to add. A number of communities in Boulder County are working toward a collective day of action through the Consortium of Cities and other agencies that we belong to. You'll remember on our work plan, we have some collective actions that we're working on regionally, and there'll be a collective day of action on June 7th on addressing gun violence. And so I'd like to add that to our advanced agenda. It'll be in ordinance, and so we'll need to back that up so we can have second reading occur on the 7th. Any other future agenda topics? Mayor Proton Maloney.
Could you repeat those dates? I'm not sure I quite caught that.
I didn't, I didn't give all the dates, but the final day of action, the collective day of action on addressing gun violence is on June 7th.
All right. And there would be a first reading?
Ahead of that.
Ahead of, thank you very much.
The appropriate time ahead of that, so staff will work through the process to make sure we give adequate notice and everything. Any other future agenda items or committee reports from folks? Mayor Proton Maloney.
There is one thing I want to point out on the agenda. If you go way into the future, Thursday, July 21st is a special meeting to talk about budget, and I just want to make sure that's going to work for everybody, because that is the budget meeting of the year, at least the biggest one. We start setting direction and so forth, and so if someone has scheduled time off or vacation or something, we would need to know that, because it's really important that all seven of us participate.
I think that's going to be changed. Don't get too attached to that date.
What's that date now?
I think we, I think we'll, we'll send out a-
That's the only day I can meet.
Dennis, I don't know what I'm doing next week, so.
But it sounds like, it sounds like we'll have city staff look for a date that works for everybody on council.
But it will still be epically dramatic like that, and we'll bear that in mind, whatever date it is.
City Manager Durbin.
I have nothing more to add to.
Any other future agenda topics from council members? All right. Thank you, everyone. With that, we're adjourned.